Aloha mai kaku. Mahalo nui, everybody. Thank you so much for being here at the Public Library at Waianalo Elementary Intermediate School. We are going to call the meeting into order at 7:00 PM. Folks that are out in the galley, if you folks want to join us, please feel free to do so. At your convenience, we remind the public and those participating this evening to also sign in. If it's easier to just pass the clipboard around, please do that as well. We just want to make sure that we get everyone's names here and then we can get the clipboard back onto the table. We also invite you guys to the flyers, any of the equipment items that are there, informational items that are there. We give you guys the opportunity to come and join us in that learning. Mahalo nui. Today is Monday, February 10, 2025. This is the Waianalo Neighborhood Board Meeting Number 32. This is our regular meeting of the month here at the Waianalo Public Library, as we mentioned. And then we have folks joining us online on WebEx. Mahalo nui for your participation. The purpose of the Neighborhood Board and the Neighborhood Board Plan is to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Rules for engaging is very simple. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise the raise hand icon if you folks are on WebEx. If you folks are here in person, to just raise your hand. When recognized by the chair, addressing your comments to the chair. Remarks should not exceed three minutes. We want to try and be very respectful of the time. That's the biggest thing there. We don't typically cut people off, but we do want you to be mindful. If your voice and comments go on longer than other people might not have an opportunity to share. We do want to make sure people introduce themselves, their first and last name for the record, before moving into any of your comments or questions. And then making sure that if you are online, your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. We remind everyone participating tonight that aloha is the function behind the work that we do. Akahi, meaning kindness, to be expressed with tenderness. Lokahe, meaning unity, to be expressed with harmony. Oluolu, meaning agreeable, to be expressed with pleasantness. Ha'aha, meaning humility, to be expressed with modesty. And ahonui, meaning patience, to be expressed with perseverance. In accordance with Hawaii Vai statutes, Chapter 5-7.5. Notes that the board may not take action or may take action on any item that is agendized as required by the State Sunshine Law, HRS 92. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless it is added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote, nine of this 13-member board, is needed to add an item to the agenda. However, it is not permitted if, one, the item that is to be added is of reasonably major importance, and, two, if the action on the item by the board will affect a significant number of persons. Determination of whether a specific matter may be added to the agenda must be done on a case-by-case basis. We remind folks to silence all electronic devices. And the meeting is going to be recorded for future use for folks to reference. For those of you that are in person, restrooms are out here to the right. And then emergency exits here. We remind everybody that this is a school campus, so to be mindful of the rules. And then when we are leaving, that we leave in a timely manner, so we can respect the space. So, welcome. We are happy to have everyone here. We're going to ask for a volunteer to open us up in pule now that all the rules have been stated. Ms. Brenda, can we ask you?
Sure.
Mahalo.
Mahalo ka'akula for gathering us tonight. We ask you for your wisdom, for your unity, for your aloha in this meeting, for Waianalo. Laura, we thank you for your good efforts for our community. And we ask that you would lead us and guide us tonight. In your name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Mahalo. We're going to move on to roll call, members. When your name is called by our Neighborhood Board Assistant, Rachel, please go ahead and acknowledge. We ask that when we go through any decision-making, that your cameras be on as well. So I'll turn it over to Rachel. Thank you.
Thank you. When I call your name, please state that you're present. Kanani?
Ail.
Thank you. Kimiona?
Ail.
Thank you. Jenna?
Ail.
That was Jenna, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And then Lores? Moyata?
Ail.
Thank you. Kapialani?
Oh.
Thank you. Ted? Brenda?
Ail.
Thank you. Canela? And Kuike? So with that, I have six members present right now.
Mahalo. So just to be mindful, we need seven to make decisions. That's our quorum count. So we'll be mindful of that. We're going to move on, members. We have a space for our kupuna. Is there any kupuna that would like to address the community? We've carved out this time to be able to ensure that community have an opportunity to learn and we can memorialize the voices of our kupuna while they're still here. So we invite anyone who is available and interested to this space if anyone wants to. Do we have anyone online that wishes to address or share? Hearing none. Anyone here in public? Any kupuna want to address the community? Okay. Hearing none. We're going to go ahead and move on. We have olalono'ia of the month. This is number eight. Aheno kamano o ka'ula hela'ino. When the birds of ka'ula appear wild, it denotes a stormy day. Signs of trouble keep people away. And that's the address there. Olalono'ia again of the month, number eight. Aheno kamano o ka'ula hela'ino. When the birds of ka'ula appear wild, it denotes a stormy day. Signs of trouble keep people away. And so we honor the voices of our kupuna that have left these really, really important informational spots for us to learn from. We're going to move on to the Honolulu Fire Department for their update. We look forward to the presentation. Thank you so much, Captain.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, board members, and friendly constituents. I'm Captain Lindsay from the Honolulu Fire Department at Gen 27, across the street, Waianalo. Tonight, I'm going to be delivering the incident statistics for the month of January and a fire safety tip for February. In January, we had two structured fires, five wildland fires, one nuisance fire, one cooking fire, and two activated alarms, along with 50 medical calls, one motor vehicle collision, two ocean rescues. For February, our safety message is concerning power outages. Prepare your supplies. Ensure your flashlights, radios, et cetera, contain batteries that are charged. Don't forget to charge the extra batteries. Prepare your family. Check in with family members. If anyone relies on medical devices requiring power, ensure your plan ahead of time. Prepare your food and water. Set your fridge and freezer to the cold dish settings. Keep them closed as much as possible during outage. Fill up the water with containers for drinking and other needs. Protect your electronics. Unplug unnecessary electronics to prevent damage from power surges. Never touch downed power lines. Assume the lines are energized and are dangerous. One more safety tip, you can visit honolulu.gov backslash DM. At this time, is there any questions?
Captain, thank you so much. That's quite an increase in incidents, yeah, in January.
Busy month, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Members, any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Anyone online? Okay, hearing none. Any members of the public online? Hearing none. Members in person here for Honolulu Fire Department? Hearing none. Captain, to your crew, mahalo nui. Thank you guys so much. We're going to move on to Honolulu Police Department. Officer Atkins, great to see you again, sir.
Aloha, everyone. I'm Officer Jared Atkins with the District 4 Community Policing Team. We also have Night Watch Commander Lieutenant Ben Villaflor online. I'm going to be presenting the stats for January 2025 for Waianalo. For motor vehicle thefts, there were five in January versus one the previous month. Burglaries, there was one in January versus two the previous month. Theft, there was five in January versus seven the previous month. U M Vs or car break-ins, there were five in January versus zero the previous month. And robberies, there was zero in January versus two the previous month. And then from last meeting, a member had requested stats from Hunananiho. So we did an SPO last week, Thursday and Friday. The first day, we were able to get two people to go to Honu, which is a homeless shelter that HPD helps run. The second day, we issued nine citations for trespassing and various park violations. As far as the driving on the beach stats, we had four citations for vehicles driving on the beach on January 31st or 30th. And then I went back three months for the park citations. So in November, we had 17 citations of various vehicle citations, park closure, trespassing. And then December, we had 29 citations. January, we had 54. And so far, February, we have 10. I can take any questions or concerns, if anyone has any.
Thank you so much, Officer. Any members online? Questions for HPD? Hearing none. Anyone from the public online? Anyone in person for HPD? Okay. Hearing no questions. Officer Atkins, thank you so much for the information. We want to continue to keep those stats kind of updated if we can. We'll figure out how to track them a little bit differently if that's helpful. And then, you know, we're looking at outreach opportunities across some of the shoreline issues that are taking place, especially with our residentially challenged folks. And so we hope that we might be able to meet up with Community Policing Team and talk a little bit about some strategies surrounding Hunananiho, especially as we think about the improvements that we're talking about with regards to bellows and the kuleana that they have to the fence line. I know that's a conversation that we've invited in the past. And so if there's ways for us to come back together and talk about those things and start to implement actions, we'd really appreciate the time.
Yeah, definitely. We'll keep those stats up. And yeah, we'll try and contact you because we're having another meeting with the military. I believe they are going to replace that fence along Hunananiho and their property. And they are going to go back out because I don't think they finished the cleanup from last week. Towards the end of this month, I don't have the exact date. But I'll send, I'll put my email in the chat. If you could just email me and then we'll get an email chain going again to have those meetings. And then as far as outreach, yeah, we're always looking to do outreach. We have connections with a bunch of social workers and stuff like that. So if anyone wants to go to a homeless shelter, they can always call 911 and we can come there and have our Honu rep, we call our homeless shelter Honu. They can be there within two hours to pick you up and take you straight there. They have wonderful services, you know, they can get you IDs, jobs, even vouchers for housing. So that's always available 24/7. We would love to help people out. So if, just call 911 and let them know, non-emergency. And that's a great way to do it.
Perfect. Officer Atkins, thank you so much to you and your team, sir. Mahalo for your time. All right, gang, recognizing that we do not have quorum currently, we're going to go ahead and defer the following item for number three, filling of board vacancies. We do invite folks that might be available and live in the sub-district, Subdistrict 9, which is Old Homesteads to the beach homes at Makapuu. One vacancy in Subdistrict 10, this is our back ag lot. And then we have Subdistrict 11, which is Haleo Puni. These three sub-districts do have an opening. And so if anyone is interested in them and wants to fill these positions, we invite you to ask questions, get to know us a little bit further. And if you folks have any desire to serve, to please consider getting in contact. So we invite the public to participate in there as well. We're also going to defer number four, filling of committee vacancy, again referencing our lack of quorum this evening. We're going to move on to our public agencies reports. This is going to start off with Board of Water Supply. Danielle, thank you so much for being here, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. I was Danielle Arneles from the Board of Water. So I have no reports of water main breaks for the month of January in Waianalo. And a brief general announcement from the Board of Water, our waterways hotline. So if you see water being wasted, such as a broken pipe, sprinkled going haywire, running faucet, excessive watering, or anything similar, please call the Board of Water to let us know so we could contact the persons or have repairs made. You can contact us at boardofwatersupply.com or call the Communications Office, 808-748-5041. Let's make every drop count and do our part to conserve our precious water and limited supply. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Dani, thank you so much. Members online, any questions for the Board of Water Supply? Seeing none. Anyone from the public online? None? Anyone here in person for the Water Supply? Dani, I don't have anyone here with questions. I just want to share a remark. Mahalo the Board of Water Supplies team for coming out to Waianalo to see the koki frog infestation area.
Oh, good.
My hope is that we may have an opportunity to do some community work with the Board of Water Supply in and around their reservoir space, was what we had talked to the crew about. And so if there is opportunities for us to think about and strategize around that, we're definitely open to bringing the community up to Koko'a in that effort. So if you can pass that along to your team, just that we mahalo their efforts to be a part of the solution. That would be great.
Great. I will pass it on. Thank you.
And then Dani, you folks don't do anything specific to our reservoirs here in Waianalo, correct? Only the pumping wells?
I believe it's on, I can confirm, but I don't think we do anything to the reservoirs, no.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a Department of Ag thing. But I do want to make sure that we're conversing about the two connections there. So at some point, I'll put us all together in a conversation around, especially what happens in high, you know, rain events where rainwater is just continuing to move. We want to make sure that there's conversations happening around the status of the reservoirs as it impacts the lore, you know, the people that live in and around those spaces. But I think Board of Water Supply should definitely be on the same page when we have those conversations. So look for an email coming from me in the future about that.
Okay.
That's our discussion. Thank you very much, Dani. Mahalo for your service. All right. We're going to move on, gang. We have Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative, Director Laura Thielen. Director, the time is yours. Thank you for being here.
So aloha, good evening, everyone. So some highlights from the mayor's newsletter first, and then I'll go to the responses for the questions the board asked last month. Many of you may have read about the sad, the death of Jeff Fiala, the firefighter. And so there was a service for him, memorial service, where hundreds of people attended. And I think it was some comfort to the family and his coworkers. Mayor Blangiardi has nominated his cabinet members for the second term. And there was a swearing into office, but we're all subject to confirmation by the council. So that process is moving forward. There is a new 90-unit affordable housing development that's breaking ground in Waikiki under the Bill 7, legislation that was passed by the council and the administration a while back to encourage more affordable housing. So it's nice to see that that's working. Repairs began on the seawall and walkway at Queen Surf in Waikiki, near the Barefoot Beach Cafe, for those of you who go out to Kapialani Park. And for the Leeward Coast, we received a new garbage truck because their garbage truck has been in the shop for quite a while. And this was put on order for some time ago. So that was a big celebration for the Leeward Coast. For those of you who are interested in either running for the Neighborhood Board, either for reelection or election, or for filing to vote, the deadline for candidates to file and also for voters to file to vote is February 21st, 2025. So you can register online on the Neighborhood Board website. It's www.honolulu.gov backslash NCO, which is short for the Neighborhood Commission Office. And then you can also email them for more information at nco@honolulu.gov. The questions folks from the board had for the city last month were around the different projects at Waianalo Beach Park and Waianalo District Park. So some of you did attend the meeting that we had at the library earlier this, I'm sorry, time is kind of a blur for me, earlier this month, I think, or late last month, where we went over some of the preliminary design options for the comfort stations at Waianalo Beach Park. And we got a lot of good dialogue and comment at that meeting. So the Department of Design and Construction had started the preliminary design for the beach bathrooms. And we're taking a look at options. And we will be reporting back to the board after we consider the input that we received at the public meeting the other night. They just released the funding to begin the preliminary design for the Arts and Crafts Building, which is on the other side of the pavilion from the comfort stations. That wastewater system serving the comfort station and the Arts and Crafts Building can only support so many fixtures. And once we get the final count on the number of fixtures, we may ask for the design on the Arts and Crafts Building to include a toilet in it. That's because if we have, say, kapuna club meeting down there or summer fun groups meeting down there, a lot of kids may not be able to make it over to the main comfort station or they'll be too young to be sent by themselves. And we may not have the sufficient staffing to be going back and forth all the time. And for kapuna, for their comfort to have a comfort station in that building, if there is a club, would be important. So we're holding off on final decisions on the number of fixtures for that bathroom until we get the engineering calculations about what it could support. The pavilion construction, the contractor is procuring the long-lead materials. And once they have a schedule for those to arrive on island, we'll be able to share a construction schedule for you. And then the gym construction, DDC expects the construction to be completed this spring in time for summer fun. But as you know, we held off on starting the gym construction until the other building was completed. So we can be assured if something unexpected happens in the gym construction, we still will have a building in Waianalo for the summer fun program. So with that said, I'd be happy to take any other questions folks have. And it's permissible to ask questions about things other than parks.
Director, thank you so very much for that. I'm sure we have some questions actually for the city. But members, do we have any members online that have questions for the office of the mayor? Okay, anyone on public, from the public online? Hearing none. Anyone from the public here in person for the office of the mayor, city? You can bring it up here. Yeah, you're welcome to. Yeah. And just introduce your name, if you don't mind. And then for those that have just came in maybe a little late, we do have a sign-in sheet. If you guys don't mind just signing in, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Hello, Laura. My name's Justin Rivera. I'm a resident here in Waianalo, particularly Ma'keah Street and Ka'aina, close to O'Kee Poultry. One of the things I'm trying to figure out is during high flooding and water situations, there seems to be a tendency to be reactionary rather than proactive. My meaning is that we clear swalls and waterways as the storm is happening. And as I'm looking at some of these documents, sorry, one moment. There was a document from 2021. One of the city council members wrote the administration asking for information on their city-owned streams and floodways maintenance schedule, which is actually due to expire August 31st, 2025. So I hope you guys are on top of that. And it said that the swalls and the under drainages of driveways are the responsibilities of property owners and that the city goes and inspects these. However, I see no evidence of this as every driveway on Ka'aina, the pipe that goes under them are completely blocked and the swells have had erosion that has filled them in. So water is not properly flowing into the drainage as it should. Additionally, the fence and wall has fallen down right there at Ka'aina and Ma'keah Street. In the middle of the storm, there was a fence in the river that the community members had to come together and cut to prevent debris. Now, if you remember, our community has suffered through flooding in this area in the past. And I'm just looking for support and contact, how we could hooey together as a community. I did talk to some of the owners at O'Kee Poultry and informed them. They were very cooperative and thanked me for talking to them. They're going to work on clearing their drain. But this is an inspection item for the city that doesn't seem to be happening. Let's see, what else? Additionally, a little further up, right next to my property, there seems to be some contention about who owns that part of the river. According to Department of Land and Natural Resources, they say that the river was given to the Department of Hawaiian Homelands through a land grant, S. 16013, dated 14 February 2007. The trees in this area are not being maintained. There are two trees currently fallen into the river near my home, which puts us all in danger. I'd like to know and have your assurance that you guys are going to pick this up and protect our community.
Thank you very much for the comments. Director, I'll work with the residents here to get you a more specific mapping area of the space. And then you can decide if there is, you know, if that's a DFM kind of conversation and/or if we have to invite other folks into that. But I'll give you a chance to share some response.
Thank you. Yeah, the mapping would be helpful with the, and if you share it with the Neighborhood Commission staff person that's there with you, that would, that will get to me. So it sounds like we would probably need to be bringing in information to the attention of multiple agencies. But we can work on getting information about the maintenance schedule, whether that contract that they have, you know, they're in the process of getting that renewed. And then take a look at getting somebody to take a look at that one area by Ma'keah and Ka'aina. For the DHHL, if it is a DHHL, we can get information over to them as well about stream clearing. But it would be helpful to get the address. I don't necessarily want to ask you to give me that online because that's personal information. But again, if you get it to the Neighborhood Board staff person, that'll come to me and then we can get it over to the appropriate agency.
Thank you, Laura.
We'll connect and then I can get that information over. Thank you for your time. All right. Moyata, question?
Director Thielen, you're doing good. I just wanted to ask what the city was doing for Mahino'a la'alei.
So I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. What we're doing for what?
Hawaiian Language Month, Mahino'a la'alei.
You know, I can get you information from the Mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts. I've seen announcements coming out from them. And they also have approached us on an idea as well, which we're very supportive of. But I know that they're doing some Hawaiian language classes that they're offering for directors as well as staff from, you know, within the city that are interested in it. They have approached us about having labels on both public facing as well as in-office things to, so that we have the Hawaiian word on the item as well as, you know, any labels that we have for the public. And as you know, we've changed all of our letterheads to include, yeah. So I think they're continuing that. I don't think what I've just given is the complete list of what they've done, but we can follow up with you folks as well. We'll be reporting back next month. But then if there's some additional ideas, you could also be working with that office on new ideas for the next year as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if there was any exciting events. Okay. Mahalo. Thank you.
Mahalo, Moyata. Director, I have one question for you, and it's in regards to invasive species. We know that the state has kind of been taking on the kuleana to address invasive species in our communities. And council member has done a really great job in trying to bring that attention to the county level. Are you aware of any progress in that conversation or any perspective that the mayor is able to provide to the communities regarding invasive species?
Yes, we actually just did a report for last year. And I'm trying to track down because I met with Councilwoman Kia Aina. And I thought we had submitted it to the council, but I just want to go back and verify. So the Botanical Gardens, Honolulu Botanical Gardens is a city organization. And so they have been working with the invasive species groups to find a location at Ho'o Maluhia. They already are doing some classes at the Botanical Gardens. And we're hoping to be doing more as part of education and outreach for the general public. The Division of Urban Forestry has been working with a number of partners on adaptations of practices to try and include some best practices. So they've stopped using mulch and are encouraging other organizations to stop doing the same. They're making sure with their contracts for the tree trimmers are disposing of mulch properly because these are sites, incubator sites for coconut rhinoceros beetle. And there's some other information that is in the report that the city has done. So when I do track down a copy of that, I'd be happy to forward that to the board as well.
That would be greatly appreciated. And then one final conversation on the ironwood trees in our parks, especially along the beach parks. As you imagine, there's been a significant amount of storm events recently. And there's quite a bit of tree debris and fallen trees and leaning trees. And so I'm just curious if any arborists or urban forestry or any parks crew are scheduled to come through. are scheduled to come through and clear any of those or if we should just be caution taping the whole forest line.
So this is in the Hunananiho area or?
Wa Manalo Beach Park and then into Hunananiho as well. Into the Bellows campground.
I can put a request to go in and take a look. I know that they do a annual or biannual clearing. And there was a fairly large one. Again, time is a bit of a blur to me now. I think it was last year. But certainly if there's anything that's of concern, they will go out and inspect it at any time. And so it may be that we have one that's due, I can find out. But if there's particular areas, please let us know. We have had to remove ironwoods in a number of locations around the island due to erosion. And then you folks may have heard that there is a dune restoration project that the park department is working on with the Department of Land and Natural Resources and UHC grant. And so that is something that you, folks, we can share information with you as that goes forward. They'll be presenting to the Kailua Neighborhood Board on a regular basis. But it's something that, you know, I have not proposed for this area, but I think it's something that the community may want to take a look at. I know the representative has been working with Bellows at doing some restoration projects in those areas. For Kailua, because we know the ironwoods are a big part of the characteristic of the area, we're proposing that if we do need to remove them for dune restoration and to plant the appropriate plants on the dune, to be planting other trees for shade trees further inland so that the community does not lose that resource. So it's something that I would encourage this board to kind of monitor how that's going. There may be elements that you like and elements you don't like and, you know, good for future conversations.
Thank you so much, Director. I appreciate the follow-up. We look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you so much for being here. Members, we're going to move on to community organization reports, starting with our education reports. We have anyone here from Wa Manalo Elementary and Intermediate School? Hearing none. Blanch Pope Elementary? Hearing none. Malamahunua Public Charter School? Aloha, kumu, welcome. The time is yours.
Mahalo. I'm going to try to share my screen. So you don't have to look at me. Let me see. Here we go. Oh, no, not that one. Okay. Aloha, mahalenui for allowing us to share a little bit about Malamahunua. Just to start us off with an olano'iau that was guiding some of our work during this past month. A'ohelo'a a'ika no'ho vale. Nothing is gained by idleness and we have been working hard at Malamahunua. And so a couple of things that we have been doing as we are moving towards the end of trimester two. And I'm hoping everybody is following the slides. You guys can see that? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, mahalo. Okay, so our papahoku, this is just our babies, our kindergarteners. They have been learning about the coral reef and their friends in the coral reef. And now they are getting ready to present at Hanoma to the visitors as well as our kamaaina alike to just remind them of the importance of the reef system. And as you can kind of see, one of our little models, the little ianlimu and creatures of the reef system that they made and that they'll be talking to those visitors over at Hanoma. Our papo mahina, our first and second, they learn about food miles this year. And so they went to visit different local stores as well as the farmer's market, learning about the importance of grow our own and supporting local. And then also actually going into the mala. And so these are pictures of them at both Sitar Station with their kalau as well as Kupai'na, right down the street, as they are learning about how they can malama'aina. Today, our K through fourth graders were able to visit with Tutu Hukule'a, offering le and oli and had a fabulous time learning from the different community partners there at M'nalua, the other edge of our Ahupu of Wa Manalo. And in celebration of mahina olalo Hawaii, if you have not seen this already, you can get these little gifts. Is that what it's called? And they have all different kind fun, different things that you can use to celebrate and communicate in a fun and succinct way. And then for those who have not been able to make it out to the different olakai, there was, this past weekend was Kahalama, the weekend before was Winward for Ko'olau. And then if you're going to be on Maui, Maui is going to be this weekend. We're going to do on the 22nd is a'olakai at Makana Ali'i. And so if you want to check out more things that are going on in different resources, then please check out the website. But so many amazing things that are, that we get to celebrate. So that's all I have. Oya valen'oh. Any questions?
Aloha, kumu, Denise. Thank you so much for the update. Members online, questions for Malamahunua? None. Anyone from the public online? Hearing none. Anyone here in person? Hearing none. Kumu, Denise, mahalo for being here. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Mahalo.
Of course. We're going to move on. Hearing none. Winward Community College? Hearing none. University of Hoi Sitar? Okay, Hoi Japkor? Hearing none. We're going to move down to Wa Manalo Health Center. Jasmine?
Aloha.
Aloha for being here, Jasmine. The time is yours.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to share about a couple of programs. One being our smoking cessation program. That's a free program for anyone wanting to quit smoking, whether that's cigarettes or e-cigarettes, vaping or Juul. So if you're interested in that, you can call our main line, 259-7948. And I also wanted to share that in recent months, we've expanded our hours. So our medical services are open in the evening. And then our dental services in Wa Manalo open earlier in the morning at seven. And then our dental in Kani'oei is open on Saturdays. And our pharmacy is also open longer into the evening as well. So I'll put those hours in the chat. But I wanted to share that. And then for our pediatrics, hopefully our pediatrician will be with us next month to introduce himself and share more about pediatrics. But we've added more of our family medicine physicians to the panel. So people can see our pediatrician and four other doctors as well. And there's evening appointments on Thursdays for those parents that have a hard time getting there during workdays. And then more well-child visits on Saturday for parents needing to get their kicking in for well-child visits and physicals. So I just wanted to share that with you all. And I will put our hours in the chat for you. And it's also on our website and our social media as well. Mahalo.
Jasmine, thank you so very much for your update. Members online, questions for the health center? Seeing none. Anyone from the public online? Anyone in person? Great. Hearing none. Thank you so much, Jasmine, for your service and support. Mahalo for your time.
Mahalo.
All right, Wa Manalo Homestead Association? Hearing none. We're going to move on to Bellows Air Forest Station. Hearing none. We have Marine Corps Base Hawa'i here this evening with us. We do have a short presentation and some information that's going to be shared with the community. So mahalo, Kristy, for being here and mahalo to your team for joining her. Thank you.
Mahalo. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, community and our online participants. This evening, we wanted to introduce the release of the noise study. And we have the team who did the study and we have information available. There's a quick QR code that everybody will be able to quickly reach the study where you'll be able to read through. And if you, as you're reading through and you have your questions, we'll be able over the next several weeks and months as you dive into it to be able to go through those. But I would like to introduce the team that did the study and they'll be able to share with you information regarding the study itself.
Mahalo, Kristy.
Hi, my name is Jeff Olander. I'm happy to be a visitor here tonight. And as Kristy just said, we were the team that prepared the Range Compatible Use Zone Study, which incorporates noise and safety zones around the various training facilities that the Marine Corps uses. So on this side of the island, obviously, that would be Bellows and Kani'oei Bay. There's also going to be a separate document for Kula. And at this point, this is kind of the beginning of the process where the public gets involved in that. So this is announcing that it's available on the Marine Corps' website. Via the QR code is the easy way to do that. And I guess that can make it to the minutes. We can incorporate that so folks can get at that. And I think the idea is just to let everybody know that it's there and you can kind of take a look at it. And the Marine Corps representatives in future board meetings will have the opportunity to answer questions for you and that kind of thing. But it's again, it's a long-term process to get everybody to understand it. It doesn't represent new activities, but it's documenting and explaining those things that are happening now so that folks have a good idea of how that all works. Because the aim of the Marine Corps is to be a good neighbor and to share that information. So that's the message tonight is just that it's out there, it's available. And we would look forward to having future questions on that be able to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that all, Kristy? So for those that are here in person, we do have a few of their posters outside for review. And then for those of you that are online, we'll make sure that we get some copies of it that we can distribute out for you folks to see. And again, the QR code, the links will be available as well.
Yeah, just wanted to share that if, again, as you read through it and those questions that do come up as you're reading through it, if you want to email myself or the chair, and the chair can email me and we can address those and answer those along the course of the next several weeks and for future board meetings as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Kristy. Members online, questions for Marine Corps Base Hawa'i? Hearing none. Any members of the public online? Hearing none. Anyone here in person for Marine Corps Base Hawa'i? Okay, Kristy, I have two questions for you. The first being, first and foremost, just mahalo for the report. I think this has been a long time coming. It's been very important to the community to get a grip on the potential impacts. And I know we've gone through lengths of time trying to figure out how to best address it. Because while the readiness is important, it is and has been for generations now a problem. And so I really look forward to diving into that with the team and allowing the community to dive into that with the team as well. So thank you guys for the work. I think that's very important. Secondly, the stream that runs through and around the parcel. Can we get someone to speak to the kind of the condition of the stream at the next meeting? Just to think a little bit about, especially as you've heard earlier, there's a lot of concern about how the water moves up and down the system. And as you know, that particular stream of poha is the main entry and exit for water that comes into the system that runs all year round. And so maintenance is a big deal for us. And we want to make sure, we did have some concern of flooding go through that back area. Olamana did its job, but it's still a big concern. And there might be some need for us to improve, I think, the condition of the stream upkeep. And so if we can have someone talk to that at the next meeting, that would be really helpful.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your time and stuff. Mahalo. We're going to move on, gang. We have Hawaii National Army, National Guard? Hearing none. We're going to take our resident and community concerns now. So we do have a kind of a queue of folks that have jumped into this. We're going to invite first the Department of Transportation, Mr. Casey Abe. Casey, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect. So we'll have the HDOT do a short presentation. And then I know we have some folks here. And we're going to take the people online first for community concerns and then we'll come through and run through those that present, that are present here to do so as well. Mahalo for your time.
Okay. Good evening, I'll check on the members of the Wa Manalo.
Yeah, we can hear, but you're a little soft. Is there any chance you could speak a little louder or more directly to your mic?
Sure. Yeah, my name is Casey Abe and I've been temporarily assigned as your State Department Transportation Highways Division Representative and will be available virtually to participate in your monthly Neighborhood Board meetings. Our previous representative, Mr. Ryan Kimura, retired at the end of December and we're currently waiting for our administration to fill Mr. Kimura's position. Looking at the board's January meeting minutes, the board voted to request the Highways Division to install a speed cable at the crosswalk fronting McDonald's on Kalani'ono Highway. I will work on this request and report back in a future meeting. On the board also voted to request the Highways Division to install delineators at the Marco Corner across McDonald's to discourage illegal overtaking. I will also work on this request and report back in a future meeting. The board also requested a speed table be installed at the crosswalk near St. Matthew's Church. During my field investigation, I noticed there is a marked crosswalk on the Wa Manalo side of St. Matthew's Church and Ehu Kai Street. And another crosswalk on the Hawaii Kai side of St. Matthew's Church, multi-purpose parking lot at Hehe Manu Street. Between the two marked crosswalks, you see Matthew's multi-purpose parking lot used for pickup, drop-off kids, vehicle parking and a playground. I would like clarification from the board on their request to install a new speed table in St. Matthew's Church. Is the board requesting the Highways Division to install speed tables at both Ehu Kai Street and He Manu Street crosswalks or just Ehu Kai Street crosswalk? Once I obtain the clarification, I can work with our traffic brands on the speed tables. Also received the email from Mr. Ray Cabrera requesting additional speed tables to be installed from the S-Cor to Mole Lake Street, a stretch of approximately 1.5 miles, which includes a long straightaway that encourages drivers to speed. During my field investigation, we currently have raised crosswalks at Mole Lake Street and in the Ole Street. There's also a signalized crosswalk at the Wa Manalo Elementary and Intermediate School, but the crosswalk is not raised. We also plan to install two new speed humps on both sides of Tinker Road intersection along Kalani'ono Highway. This slide shows the tentative location of the two new speed tables on both sides of Tinker Road and a new sharp crosswalk marking at the intersection. I'll need to report back in the future meeting when construction will start. And also do my field inspection. I noticed we do have flashing yellow lights on both sides of the Wa Manalo Elementary and Intermediate School along with a speed sign as you approach the school from the Kailua side of Kalani'ono Highway. I will need to work with our maintenance crew to ensure the lights and speed signs are working properly and to install a new sign for the flashing yellow light as you approach the school from Bellows Air Force Base. I'd like to request Mr. Cabrera work with the Neighborhood Board members to determine what other location do you like speed tables to be installed and any other safety feature that would help curtail speeding the area. The board members can let me know their decision and I can work with the traffic brands and seeing if we can accommodate the board requests. This concludes my report. And if elected official or board members have any concerns about the state highways, they can email me. If possible, please attach pictures or Google map location of the area concerned and I will investigate and report back at the next meeting. I can take questions at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Abe, thank you so much for the very detailed report. We look forward to engaging with you. And we want to commend and recognize Brian Kimura for his service to our community and to many communities in the role that he played. He was very influential in supporting the needs of this community. And so we wish him a happy retirement and thank him again for his service over the many years that he has done so in this community. I'm going to make a comment real quick for Ted Ralston, who joined us at 7:34. So we do have quorum now at this point. But Ted, I really want you to make sure you build a relationship with Mr. Abe. I think you having the most relationship to transportation opportunities and needs, that'd be a very important thing for you to do. And so if you can connect and email, that would be great. You have your hand up, Ted?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
Yeah, that was gonna say the same thing, uh Chair. Uh and uh Casey, thank you so much for joining us. We have had a really good role run for about five years with Brian. And and he came out, we did walk around inspections, and we wrote lists of things we wanted to inform each other. It was a really good relationship. Uh so appreciate you stepping forward in that, in that uh, in the shoes he wore. Yeah, one of the things that we've, we're trying to get into, we haven't done it yet, is uh connect with the people, the design team that's working on the phase three of the re uh reservicing program, which will go from Makai Pier to uh to uh Sandy Beach. And the sooner we can get involved with that, the the sooner we can understand any issues that might show up that otherwise we would find after the fact. So uh we just like to work with the people ahead of time if 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 possible. So if you can arrange that, we uh it'd be great to uh get together.
Sure.
Perfect. Mr. Abe, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. We will definitely get you answers to the questions. And we'll reach out to Mr. Cabrera, uh make sure that we are having the conversations there as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Um anyone else online that has a community concern or report? Okay, Robert P. Imona? No?
Uh yes, my name is Robert P. Imona. I'm with the Ko'olapoko Lions Club. And uh we're just uh on a membership drive. We're kind of constantly on a membership drive. Um anybody interested? We can, we do really good work for the community. We do uh vision and hearing screenings in schools. We could do a lot with the schools in Waimeanalo, Blanche Pope, Waimeanalo Elementary, Waimeanalo Intermediate. Uh just getting the kids uh screened and uh identifying problem, problem areas. Problems with uh kids being able to see and and hear. Uh it affects uh how well they learn in school very directly. Um anybody interested in becoming a lion? Um we do really good, as I said, we do really good work out in the community. Um just go ahead and email me and uh I'll get you hooked up. My uh display name is now my email address. So um just drop me a line and I'll get you hooked up. Ko'olapoko Lions Club, we've been in the community for over, over seventy years in the Kaileua and Waimeanalo community. I'd be, I'll be looking forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Mr. Pete Imona, thank you so much for your service and for coming to the board and sharing that invitation. We appreciate it. Mahalo. Ted, you have your hand up for something else? No, okay. Anyone else? Public reports, community concerns online? Hearing none. In person? You folks wanna just queue up as you folks need to, um and then introducing your names, please? Yeah, and then move on with your uh sharing, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Mahalo, um my name is Laualani Teal, and I am um with the Ehanau Cultural Council along with kupuna Liko Martin, who is one of our kupuna on our council. And um and so we just came back from the legislature and um mahalo. Um where two bills were heard on birth practices. Um unfortunately, the bill that we, um that the Waimeanalo Neighborhood Board endorsed and that we were working on, um HB 1328 uh was deferred without a vote. So that was a little hard, but um we are um hopeful that we will work out some kind of a legislative solution. We're um definitely um our folks who work in the Hana world are not um it, the um the amendments to the other bill, 1194, don't work for us. And um we're currently in the position of deciding whether we need to oppose that bill or whether there is a way to take the essential content from 1328 to put it into this other bill to protect Hana practices, including the ability to have others who are not Kanakamauli attend uh births that people in the community choose. So uh again, I just want to thank the Waimeanalo Neighborhood Board for your endorsement and of 1328, and it's not over. And um uh yeah, mahalo nui loa to to everyone. Mahalo.
Mahalo, thank you so much. Uncle Liko, sure.
Aloha, everybody. So I kind of kakuo with the midwifery issues. I've delivered children on my own and um very much support all the levels of all the different kind of medicines. Okay, and and uh so today, I mean, I'm glad to hear that the Neighborhood Board was supportive of the of the House Bill. But it was uh, today was a constitutional crisis. Because the state of Hawaii, see, is couldn't quite get out of the box with, you know, I'll I'll frame it this way. I have, this is what I filed with the uh thing, and you know, I kind of do a fair amount of this. I establish communications, I establish authorities for government bodies. And the thing that I wanted to bring forth before the legislators, what, what is that? What they are bound to by the constitution, by the laws, okay? And the laws of the the state of Hawaii coming in through the Congress, Act of Congress, are quite different than Hawaiian law set by Hawaiian judicial precedent. Hawaiian usage under the revised statute to seven dash one. Yes, culture, religion, et cetera, but you're subject to the state. Versus Hawaiian law, Hawaiian judicial precedent established, still on the books, November 25th, 1892, Hawaiian national usage. Okay, this is what the, this is what the, the, the uh was, was really occurred today. It's like uh, there were a lot of disappointments. Uh because I've been with Laualani, I've traveled to the mainland, I've traveled, I've been at the, you know, I give birth. I, you know, once lady who was testifying today, she named her baby Clay. Because if I hadn't given her the ally, she probably would have bled to death. So you you gotta bring it all, you know, but sometimes you can't quit. So what today was like the flood, Noah in the flood. They couldn't really abandon the people uh under an apartheid system that we have here in Hawaii by distinction. Uh through our national origins, uh apartheid is uh, they ex, you know, all the definitely, you know about apartheid. You look at Gaza and there's apartheid. Welcome to apartheid, okay? And for better or for worse, that's what we have. But the thing was um that uh I kind of see that today, all the hard work that was done by these communities all around the place, even all of the the reports, Laualani, like them, they're on the, they're on, they don't even sleep. They've worked so hard to bring out all the truth, the real kind of stuff, the real human stuff. And it was like, it's like was, you know, a lot of different metaphors, like mutiny on the bounty. Okay, you know, here you have the crew says, hey, we're tired of it. Okay, we're tired of being, you don't have it, you don't, you don't have a treaty of annexation, and we're subject to this and boom, boom. And you're telling us we gotta do this, we don't, you don't even have schools, you're gonna criminalize us because, and then you don't even have the, the, you know, the structure by which you can make it right. So all of these things, it was kind of like they consolidated, use, dropped one bill and kind of use all of the great work to shield themselves. Okay, to shield an entity that has not dealt with the ramifications of 1893. And that's one of the things that that I brought up is very, very important for our Kanakahui to understand, very important for any of the other states, the state of Hawaii, the United States and its people. Okay, very important to realize that uh there has never been a sanitation. The apology resolution, they put up facts, they had conclusions. But what they did was make a commitment. What you can hold the law to is make a, they made a commitment in 1993 to acknowledge the ramifications. That's never been done.
Uncle Liko, I'm so sorry. Can we have you wrap up your thought?
Sure. So I just wanted to to bring that forward and update the community. Um, you know, we're gonna take it all the way, okay? And that is the issue going forward, you know, whose bus is it? So aloha to everyone, and uh, you know, glad to be able to report. I'm open to any kind of questions. I've been doing this since the time I was five years old. And uh I love my job. And thank you, Laualani, all the hard work that you did. And hats off to them and and to the other people too, you know, they had to deal with it. And so that's what I'm saying. The best is yet to come. Good times around the bend.
Beautiful. Mahalo nui aloha. Thank you. Sure, sure. Thank you so much for that. Mahalo for your time. Anyone else in person? Yeah, if you folks wanna queue up, please introduce yourselves. Thank you very much.
Hello, uh my name is David Lutke. I live on Waikupana Ha Street. Um the state of Hawaii for the last thirty years has allowed the state of California's Department of Food and Agriculture to operate a medfly breeding facility on agricultural land. I learned recently this facility dumped 6,000 gallons per day of R3 wastewater directly onto the ground through a drip irrigation system. Um R3 wastewater is not only undrinkable, it's not even safe for human contact. People who come in contact with R3 wastewater are advised to wash it off immediately with soap and clean water. If you were to ask to walk through the area, CDFAs irrigating, they'd be required by law to stop irrigating for fourteen days before they could allow you into the area. The uh entire production process that they have up there takes place indoors in a tightly sealed, climate-controlled warehouse. No part of their production process requires their facility to be located on ag land. Their production warehouse could operate just as well in Campbell Industrial Park or Alaska, as in Waimeanalo. Um the only use they have for Waimeanalo ag land is as a disposal site for their R3 wastewater. Uh they also, they also produce four cubic yards of solid waste per day. I've spoken to you folks about this earlier. Which creates a problem. Although they do their best to deny it, they have documents in their possession that confirm that their wastewater, their solid waste and their operation in general all produce very strong unpleasant odors. Um it's bug excrement, tons and tons of bug extra excrement. Four cubic yards a day, 6,000 gallons of water per day full of bug poop. Um their, every part of their process literally smells. Um and I've got documentation for this. I won't go through it all with you. I'm kind of hopeful that I can get some guidance from the board as to how we can look at this and address it. Um CDFA actually gets um their sterile fruit flies from two different facilities. One of them here in Waimeanalo, the other one's in um Guatemala. The facility at Guatemala treats their um wastewater to drinking water standards. Um here, it's uh untreated sewage that they're dumping on the ground. Um and I want us all to be mindful of why Manalo drinking water. Um those guys are dumping aerated bug sewage, 6,000 gallons a day at the top of our valley. Um and it smells. We smell it in our house, we smell it in our yard. It seems um thirty years ago, maybe that was an okay idea for the state to allow this. But it seems now, knowing what we know, um and that if the Guatemala facility can produce sterile medflies and fit into their budget, the ability to treat their water such that it can be used in a fish pond and to grow edible vegetables. I think CDFA and Waimeanalo can afford to do the same thing. And if they can't, maybe they should be getting their bugs from, from Guatemala and not, not polluting our environment if they can't afford it. We talk about rain and drainage, that's a whole nother thing. But we see cascades of brown water coming off that property into the ditch in front of ours, going to the ocean every time we get a heavy rain. Um I've spoken to them for four years, um their legal department, um their PR guys, their representatives. They're very dismissive and condescending, talking to me, I'm hoping I can get your help, somebody's help in addressing this and getting the state to make a closer look at this. Uh of course, with the state, they have state leased land. Um and they're approved by a um wastewater and solid waste. They make perfunctory uh pro forma inspections and come away and say everything's fine. It's not fine. They shouldn't be doing this here. That's pretty much the extent of my concerns.
Mahalo nui for that. Uh I appreciate you coming back to the board and giving us an opportunity to relook and reevaluate that. We have taken action in the past to request a a site visit. Uh and we began that conversation, and also our representative helped us kind of connect some of the dots there. So we look forward to digging deeper, and I apologize that they've been dismissive of your issues because uh we will not allow that further. So thank you so much for your time. Mr. Worth, are you speaking this evening? Thank you. Anyone else in the public here tonight to share concerns? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Worth.
Okay, I have uh two items. One, following up
And just for the record, can you introduce yourself?
Oh, my name is Mitch Worth. I live in Waimeanalo. I've been back to um Waimeanalo for over fifty years now. I'm following up dealing with wastewater issue and and wastewater treatment. Um and I'm expanding on uh the testimony last month that Barbara Meyer gave regarding cesspools and uh and those kinds of issues. Now, what we need is kind of a redirection on what seems to be steamrolling down the line of requiring to have sewage, um sewers put into the beach lots. Um for the last forty years, we've been testifying in front of the city council. And um Bob Schlescher, who's no longer with us, is a scientist, and he was an expert dealing with cesspools and treatment and wastewater treatment. And um years ago, what was presented to the city council was that the beach lots is an unusual and very distinct, unique area compared to any place else on the island. We're living in the beach lots on a giant um basically sand dune. And what was testified to and the city council um recognized was that, as Bob Schlescher pointed out, that with the cesspools, which is basically a hole in the sand, and the sewage goes into there, that within one foot distance from the, from the walls and from the base of the cesspool, that the water that filters through the sand, which is very porous compared to any other type of uh ground um element, allows aerobic digestion, which means that the sewage is treated within one foot distance through the sand to tertiary treatment, which means it's, would be drinking quality water. Our sewer treatment plant, our wastewater management, only treats it secondary. Now, years ago, it was authorized for tertiary treatment, which means that all that water that would be flowing through and was injected into the ground and which probably underground streams pollutes the bay, which there's never been any studies, although we've been asking for it for all these years, to say, instead of blaming it on the beach lots polluting, which would create an enormous cost for putting in sewers, which is not needed. Instead, those sewers should be placed on the other side of the highway. The Hawaiian communities and our neighbors have been waiting to build houses, and they're not allowed to because they don't have the infrastructure. What we said back in front of the city council many years ago was instead of spending an enormous amount of money and wasting that money over in the beach lots, putting in sewer systems, use that money over on the other side of the highway. And they did. And they were able to produce a lot more housing for the Hawaiian community. What we're saying now is, why waste money over there? They should be expanding the housing for more of the Hawaiian community and our neighbors on the other side of Hawaii because on the other side of the highway, because they have clay soil, which does not allow the drainage and the aerobic digestion to happen. They need sewers over there. They need the infrastructure. But we also need a treatment plant to be upgraded and expanded for tertiary treatment. Because all that water, instead of being pumped out and polluting with secondary treatment out into the bay, can be used for water for agriculture, for all that side of the highway, instead of using our drinking water, our potable drinking water. Now, when I came here fifty years ago, the drinking water was sweet. The percolation through the coals took twenty-five years for it to be purified and to percolate through. And that's how we got our water. It was great water. But with developers wanting to develop more here and there's a whole construction industry that's pushing this behind the scenes, we now get our water mixed with water from Kailua. If you've noticed, there's a whole lot of chlorine taste in there. And that is to combat the E. coli, or let's say just poop. You know, so we're drinking poop water that's chlorinated such a high degree. Why should we have this kind of happening? What we should have is a good treatment facility, wastewater treatment facility, which allows water to be dispersed throughout throughout the agriculture department, agricultural lands, and save our drinking water instead of it being restricted. Because down the line, you're gonna have you're gonna have restrictions. We're gonna have to pay enormous sewer fees that are unnecessary. I have another issue.
Okay.
That I wanted to.
Would you wrap up the first one and then move on to that? Thank you, Mister Worth. I can grab that while you have the discussion. Thank you. Sorry, we're gonna need you to talk into the mic, Mister Worth. Thank you.
What I'm handing out was put over through the PDF and maybe a lot of people didn't didn't want to go through that or didn't read it or didn't have accessibility to it. But we did get response from our board chairman, Kimiona, and beach lots representative, Mister Ralston, who did respond to it. Unfortunately, we didn't have any city officials respond to what we were pointing out. And all we heard back was, we need the sewer system. So it was totally responsive to the real issue that's down through there. So I'd like that to be handed out to some of our city officials. Esther is not here today. I wish she was here because she felt that we couldn't stop the steamroller going for the for this cesspools. I think if she read that, that would be helpful for her and I hope that that'll be spread around more.
Irene, we'll make sure you guys get a copy of it, Irene, and then we'll invite our rep and our senator as well. If they would like a copy, we can send it out to them.
Now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, my and also what I to have had was would be a resolution from from our board backing up the idea that we have laid out in the in the handout that I put out. The other issue is about invasive species. I don't know if many people know about this. I might have been one of the unlucky ones to have discovered that there's a stinging nettle caterpillar. It's smaller than a small fly. But if you touch one of those things, it's a splinter that has toxins in it and it burns crazy. It's it's something that moves so fast. I have about twenty-five orica palms in the front part of my yard behind my fence line. And in two weeks' time, all of the greenery on the orica palms were gone. They looked like skeletons. And the orica palm is much thinner than a lot of the other palms, so it was an easy one for the nettle caterpillars to invade. Now, sometimes the Department of Agriculture gets a lot of criticism for not being responsive, but I have to say that the responsiveness that I've gotten has been amazing. This Tobias, who heads the group that deals with the nettle caterpillars, they release these tiny wasps. They don't can't sting people. But what they do is invade the body of the caterpillar and they lay their eggs. And then they make their way around and they wound up. They've already cleared out my oricas are starting to come back now. But the problem is, is other neighbors may have this and it spreads so fast. They could just devastate. And also, if you're working without gloves and you just touch these plants, I've gotten stung and it's just so painful. I can put alloy, I can try and do all kinds of stuff. I can't get rid of the sting. It's it's terrible. And this invasion of the species. Now Tobias, when he came, he asked me to spread the word around. And I have his phone number.
Tobias is from the State Department of Ag?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have a I'll hand you the there's two in color here. It's two sided. Some that are not in.
Thank you.
Some that are not in color. But the phone number I have it's on there. And he's he'd be happy if anybody has this problem. That just contact him. I have his number on there. And he will bring his team out. He comes like once a month and puts out more of the wasps in the yard and he keeps monitoring and they check out to make sure they're all gone. So the last time he was there, he's he said most of them are gone, but he's gonna come back one more time just to make sure. So this is a great response to get rid of a pest that can really swarm our neighborhood. So I just wanted to put that out.
I appreciate the update, Mister Worth. Thank you so much for your time. Anyone else in here to share this evening? Okay, hearing none. We appreciate everyone bringing their voices to the board. We look forward to learning with you folks forward. And we're gonna move on to our next conversations. This is with our elected officials, starting with Esther Kiaina's office, our council member. Irene?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Irene Lemos and I'm from the office of Councilmember Esther Kiaina. We don't have a report, but I'm happy to take back any questions for you.
Mahalo. I think if you were on from the beginning, so if there's anything that has been in conversation, then you're welcome to take that back, yeah.
Yes.
Specific to city, okay.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Got you. Sunel, you have a question for a council member or did I miss your hand earlier?
Aloha, Chair. Mahalo nui.
Aloha.
Sunel Koi. This is for, yes, Esther's office.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Last last year, earlier last year, we had sent emails to, I believe, Lisa Martin, Esther Kiaina, D L N R, D H H L, H P D, maybe even OHA. Because there has been an unattended boat, an unattended vessel here in our neighborhood. So it was dropped off one day and nothing has happened with it since. Each department is claiming that it's another department's jurisdiction. I can give the address of where the vessel is currently and see if I can follow up with that.
Yes, could you do that on the chat, please, if that's okay?
Yes. And then, sorry, okay, so that's the first issue. Another one. We noticed that over at Vava Malu, there used to be a big blue bus that was stationed out there forever. And a couple of days ago, we drove by and it was no longer there. Is it something that the departments had gone on to check on it, you know, if it was there illegally parked? Was it told to move or whatnot? Because we found that there are more and more vehicles and it seems to be transit that are posting up in that area. Okay, Chair, thank you so much. Those were my questions. I appreciate it and I know I was late, but I appreciate the time. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Sunel. We look forward to some response from Irene and Councilmember's office on the two items. And then we'll also share that again, Irene, if it gets distributed out from your folks' office, we can share that with our elected officials. Specifically to the boat, that would be helpful. And then I'll share it over to the department, the Hawaiian Homesteads Association, and see if they have any opportunities there.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, members, any questions for Councilmember Office? Anyone online? Seeing none. Anyone on public for Councilmember Office online? None. Anyone here in person, Councilmember? Seeing none. Great. Irene, thank you so much for your time. Mahalo for being here. We're gonna move on to Senator Chris Lee. Senator, thank you so much for being here. We look forward to your report. Oh, is he still online? Senator, are you present? Okay, we have you, but not cannot hear you. Maybe work on that. We'll move on and come back. So that brings us to our representative, Lisa Martin, State Rep. Aloha, Rep. Martin. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Aloha, mai kako. I made some notes so I wouldn't forget to talk about. So it's a busy time in the legislative session. And I wanted to bring up a few things that are moving that I think are of interest to the Waianao community. One is I have a bill for funding for the CRB response program at UH. And they they do a lot of different things. So in that bill, there are a lot of different line items. But one that I am particularly excited about for myself as a land manager and other people with that in that same situation here on Oahu is to have them provide free training and materials for protecting our palms until such a time as we have a biocontrol. They are also the ones doing the research on the biocontrol and the biocontrol is basically you infect the beetles with a virus and it's something that has been done for decades in South Asia. That same virus will not work on our variety of beetles, but they are looking into some in other parts of the Pacific. In a controlled environment, they would have to make sure, A, that it kills our variety of beetle. And then the second thing they'd have to make sure is that it does not bother. We have a native beetle that lives on Kauai. Where there are also CRB on Kauai. And so they have to make sure that it does not bother our native beetle. And if that were the case, then they could release it. So that would be multiple years out. But the idea being that until that time, we could try to protect our trees on Oahu instead of giving up on them and just letting them all die off. So that is, you know, that is one bill. It also has provides funding for the response to keep it from spreading on the three islands where it has not yet spread. And they feel that if they knew ten years ago, what they have learned over the last ten years in terms of management and treatment, they could have prevented the spread on Oahu. But it was new and they didn't have a lot of tools in their arsenal at that time. So I'm hoping at least we can prevent the spread on some of the other islands. So that is one bill that is moving. Another thing is I wanted to say that my top priority C I P is for the Makai Pier. That's a half a million dollars to dismantle the hurl building, which is the reason they don't allow fishing on the pier because that building is falling apart and it's very dangerous. The UH has done the paperwork. So if if I'm able to get that funding, they can include that in their current contract with the current permit for the much larger pier project, which does not mean that we will see immediate results. It will still take a couple of years, but that's much better than it taking even longer. And then I wanted to I wanted to talk about the midwife issue, which you folks, I missed last month's meeting. But which you folks had a resolution on and which we heard the bill just today. We heard two bills today. And I am really happy to report that the version that moved out of committee has very broad exemptions for anyone who is of Native Hawaiian descent. Whether they have zero training or a lot of training, the state will not regulate them in any way if they are ethnically Hawaiian. In addition to that, there's also an exemption for people that might not be of Native Hawaiian descent but are recognized by a Kupuna Council through Papa Ololokahi. So there's kind of the two pathways to be completely exempted from regulation, either through your Native Hawaiian descent or through training with a recognized body. Both of them are in our laws already as exempted. In addition to that, the other part of the bill is focused on licensed midwives and just enables them to have a much broader scope of practice, which enables them to be covered by health insurance and to prescribe, to diagnose, to do a lot of things that they are trained to do as primary care providers, as independent primary care providers. On that same issue, I did support as my top priority G I A funding for people here in Hawaii who want to pursue a training to become a certified midway. There is training available completely online and you can do the preceptor in-person training that comes at the end here in Hawaii. So people do not need to leave our state. It's not that expensive. It's there isn't a big barrier to entry. You need a G E D. It's not a very, it's not like going to a very selective program. And you need to take courses for three years, basically. And so that pathway is available and given that it is not that expensive, I really think that we can cover that cost and encourage people, no matter whether they have whatever their cultural practices might be, to also add that education and those skills to their repertoire. In addition to that, I have a separate initiative, which is a traditional healing bill. And the way that it works in our state to do an insurance mandate. Right now, some of our healthcare providers are reimbursing through Medicaid. Quest providers are reimbursing for services at the Waianao Health Center for traditional healing practices. And I think the program is fantastic. And I'd like to see that coverage through all of our insurers so that people, even if they, for example, they have insurance through their place of work, they could still go to the Waianao Health Center and seek those services which help lifestyle changes around diseases like hypertension, diabetes, and may be much more effective than what they're able to get through their current doctors. So the way it works is there has to be a study first. So I have introduced a bill and there'll be a companion resolution that refers to that bill, which will not move this session to do an audit to see what the financial impact would be of that mandate on the insurance industry. And then based on that audit, which I would expect in December of this year, then next year we can try to pass the bill. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
Martin, thank you so much for making time this evening. Any members online? Questions for Representative Martin? Seeing none. Any members of the public online, Representative Martin? Seeing none. Anyone here in person for Representative Martin? Mr. Lavalani? Can you come to the mic, can't you?
So my question is, you know, I think that one of the really important parts of House Bill thirteen twenty-eight that we didn't that that did not pass, that was deferred without a vote today, was the PEP pathway, right? And while I do understand that you're saying that, you know, people could potentially access this three-year online course. The the truth is that it does actually require travel and it requires a licensed preceptor and a bunch of other things that are obstacles. So it basically long assures no one's been able to do it yet in the five years it's implemented. So the PEP pathway is an apprenticeship pathway that would allow that would allow for local midwives, clinical midwives, as opposed to cultural practitioners like myself, to, to be able to study under an apprenticeship program, take the exact same test and go forward. Can you explain, because right now there are 97% of the midwives are not from here and there have been zero Kanaka Ma'ali who have been able to achieve that meek schooling, cost being only one of the barriers. So could you just explain, I mean, I have a lot of questions, but I think that would be the one to ask you to please explain why would you oppose the one pathway that, to clinical licensure that is available here locally?
Mahalo for your question.
Again, I don't think that's the only way that is available here locally. We do have preceptors here in our state now. Since the program started, now we have 41 certified or licensed, licensed midwives here. And we, in addition to that, we have certified nurse midwives. So all of those can act as preceptors. But the reason is because the PEP pathway, which was brought up, is not recognized by the national bodies, these national midway bodies. They used to, like MIAC, they used to recognize it and they decided that it did not meet their standard because there's no quality control. If the, there's one person doing the teaching and if that person's practices are not excellent and updated, then that person is the only source of information. The bill actually does have language. If the national accreditation bodies change their mind in the future, whatever they see as a, as meeting the standards, including that pathway, would be recognized in our state. So we would not have to go back to our statute and change it. But it's really a difference in opinion on the quality standard that our mothers and babies deserve. And we did hear a lot of testimony from our hospital staff about the problems that they deal with in terms of dealing with failed home births, when things don't go right in the home, and the heartache that they face when they are seeing cases that were very preventable, where it didn't have to go that way. And I do want to be clear that in our state, we don't collect data, which is, that is a bad, you know, not a good thing for the Department of Health and I have been urging them to start to collect that data. But we don't have good local data, but we certainly have a lot of data from individual hospitals. So not statewide, but for each hospital of births that they have recorded as deaths in their hospital, but that baby died before it got to the hospital when it was in the care of, you know, during a home birth. Sometimes because it was, they, they didn't transfer soon enough because the, I don't know why, but presumably, you know, there was an inability on the part of the birth attendant to realize that the situation had become emergency. And so anyways, trying to strike a balance between safety for our community and allowing our native Hawaiians to practice their full traditional rights under the constitution.
Mahalo Representative, if you don't mind, I do have a question for you. Thank you. Clearly, it's, it's going to be more conversations, I think, with this topic. Obviously, I think there's much more that needs to be amended. But I wanted to just kind of revisit two of the items that were brought up. We have this issue with the stream system that's up in Miki'a. So I'll make sure you get copied on that as well. If you can help with that follow-up, that would be really helpful. And then Mr. Wertz's conversation with the Department of Ag's treatment of this nettle caterpillar. I'll make sure you get copied as well on that. I know these conversations have been very, very important in the community, as you know. And then we've talked about the fruit fly, med fly facility. So I'm going to rekind of communicate in that way. If we can work on getting access to that with you and the Senator, we have to address that and that, that's not okay. And so I do want us to, to come down on that. And I'm just going to ask a very, make a very blunt statement. There's been a lot of push, particularly, and hopefully we'll hear from Senator Lee. But the move of the Oisk and Hisks under the Department of Ag has been a big concern that some of the community members have been bringing up. Why haven't we just considered changing the leadership at the Department of Ag? To that, you don't have to answer, but I just want to put that on the record. I'm happy to, I'll say it. We have, we have documented issues regarding the Department of Ag and it just seems so.
So I, so I will be clear.
Yep.
The House position is very clear that we do not want to move Hisk.
Okay.
And I have been very public in my fight. Department of Agriculture is very good at some things, like their response to the nettles, I'm very impressed with that. I did just Google it, I've never heard of this before. It says that it's already spread statewide. So I'm surprised that they're actually bringing that attention to it. But, but generally, dealing with our invasive pests has not been their strong suit. And I would be very, very worried if they were the only source, which is why I have thought to have other sources like Hawaii Ant Lab and the UHCRB Response Unit also have funding. Not instead of, but in addition to, so that they can continue their work, which complements the Department of Agriculture. So I think, I think you know I'm on the same page.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that because I also know that you do serve on the Hisk.
I do know, and you, and you have heard me in the past, I think, because you're often at hearings, but.
The, the other thing I, I want to speak to that is that I, you know, our koki frog attempts and right now has drafted this really, I, I just can't imagine why we have this issue. But we have a shortage of helicopters and operators here in Hawaii that can serve on contract work to allow for forested spaces and to, for work to be done in forested spaces. And so is that something that we can put either attention to in some manner? Would you, how would you recommend us trying to address or advocate for that? Because.
I did not know that was a problem. I do know that the one time that we did the helicopter runs to try to do koki management, it didn't work.
Correct.
Obviously, one try is not enough. You can learn from that try and maybe it had to, it should have been a smaller, more concentrated area or more clearing prior to the helicopter flight. So I'm not saying that that shouldn't be an art, you know, a bit of our arsenal, a tool in the toolkit. But I had not heard anything about there being a shortage of providers of that service.
Okay, I'm happy to make connections with you and the Department of Forestry folks that have been informing us about that. And I think that'd be an important thing for Hisk to consider. It sounds kind of ridiculous to me.
Yeah, I know they have, they have standing contracts that they have with private businesses for fire-related stuff. So when we did the last one, it was one of the extra fire days that they hadn't used and the contract was going to expire. So they was use it or lose it, so they used it for that. But I do know they have those types of contracts on all of the islands.
Got it, appreciate it, thank you so much for your time, mahalo Rep. We're going to go back to Senator Lee.
Hey, sorry, I was on a whole separate set of calls. As you know, we're in the middle of our ledge session. So actually tomorrow in our committee, we have, I think, three different agendas with 27 bills. So it's the height of our crazy period. But I want to highlight just a couple of them. One is Senate Bill, and these are all the bills that are, some of the bills that I put in this year that are moving along right now. But Senate Bill 1160, which deals with ticket scalping and a lot of complaints people have every time there's a big concert that comes to town and all of a sudden, you know, as soon as the tickets are announced, all these like mainland bots have bought them all up. This would prevent that kind of thing from happening by limiting the resale to the same amount that's paid in the first place. Secondly, Senate Bill 1035, which actually codifies in state law what the federal government currently requires when it comes to like hidden junk fees and things like that. So when you're trying to buy something or what have you, like, you're not going to get charged like all these ridiculous other fees that suddenly show up on your, your bill. And this would prohibit that because we think the federal government, if the new administration follows through what they had said they're going to do, is going to repeal all that at the federal level. And like corporations kind of take advantage of people that way. So hopefully we'll have the state policy to, to protect. Similarly, Senate Bill 1163 would bar companies from taking people's data, like their cellphone location data, stuff like that, and selling it to third parties, which is happening right now. And it also barred folks from, you know, when you have like Alexa or whatever else that's, or you're just your cellphone, listening to what's going on around you, from taking that audio and that information and selling it, which is also happening right now, and it's pretty concerning. It's a huge privacy issue for people. So this would block that. Actually, up for hearing tomorrow is Senate Bill 1040, which is a bill, we almost got through last year, but hopefully goes through this year. It would set aside funds to cancel all the unpaid medical debt for people in Hawaii. It's about 15% of homes where people have medical debt they'll never be able to pay off. So it's just hanging in, like a noose around their neck for their credit score and everything else. You know, a lot of this is, somebody has one medical situation, all of a sudden insurance only covers part of it, and now you're in the hole $100,000 and there's nothing you can do about it. So this would wipe that all out by essentially buying the debt for one penny on the dollar and canceling it. And this is something that's been done in several other states now, but it would definitely benefit folks here in Hawaii. And then there's a couple of bills on trying to engage the community more. So Senate Bill 1031, I put in, it's getting amended right now, but basically it would establish for like a community referendum, advisory referendum, so we can put questions out to the community on whatever the issue might be and give folks a chance to vote on it, similar to how we vote on constitutional amendments right now at each election, but without actually amending the constitution. And then finally, there's two bills I wanted to highlight that I put in this year, Senate Bill 1665 and Senate Bill 1032. And these deal with a lot of the outside influence coming into the state. One would bar foreign ownership of our critical assets, like our utilities and power plants and telecommunications. And the other one, I think even more importantly, would bar foreign money in our elections. And right now that is something that's kind of happening all over the place. And really, we should be the ones to determine where Hawaii is going, those of us who live here, rather than be subject to, you know, some big foreign corporation dumping millions of dollars into an ad campaign to try and change the outcome. So with that, happy to dive into everything else. I only heard the latter end of the conversation with Lisa, but on the, the Ag piece, or on the invasive species piece. I used to serve on the invasive species council myself as well. You know, and obviously we've been fighting a lot of these issues in Waimanalo and on the windward side, especially with koki and little fire rent and everything else. But I mean, yeah, I think ensuring there's continuity so that you have departments or groups or whoever it is out there able to continue managing an invasive species situation without a break is critical. Because if you stop for even a little bit, you know, the thing gets out of control and it takes you that much more time and effort and money to contain it. And that's where I think the ball's been dropped, especially when it comes to koki, which could have been addressed, and LFA for that matter, early on, had there been the, the capacity to. So definitely watching that as well.
Senator, thank you so much for your time and for being here. Members online, questions for Senator Lee? Hearing none, anyone on the public side online? Okay, anyone here in public? Uncle Liko? If you can, just introduce yourself again.
My name is Liko Martin. And one of the things island-wide and I'm concerned about is the the consistencies in historic preservation activities, okay? And the proper qualifications and certification of local governments, which I'm very familiar with Esther Kiaaina and what was, what they went through the process to put city and county back in order. The issue that I'm, that I'm like to put on the table to the Senator is that in my, actually on the ground, like on various islands, one of the issues is that the certification of the local government under the federal statute Title 16, conservation, chapter 8, historic preservation programs where funding comes is, is that the certificating of certificate, the authenticating agency is Hawaiian law. Specifically, the revised laws of 1955, volume 1, chapter 14, which is based upon the Civil Codes of 1859, which deals with all the things like your harvesting, all the basic stuff you say, you know, Hawaiian rights. But the, the issue is the developers, okay, will go and the city council has not, again, it comes to definition. Under the revised laws, we're not subject to the state. It's the other way around. And the developers should be subject to Hawaiian national usage and not writing themselves in through the admissions act, which again comes without any formality. There's no treaty, there's no boundaries. When, you got to understand that in 1959, Congress, there wasn't, nobody could sign off on that. So we're operating under a, a trust experiment, okay? I'll give you a good example, right now in Manoa, okay? Because I was, when I heard about the, putting together the, oh, city and county of Honolulu, it kind of came to me just through newspaper. So I went down there and I presented all this to the council. They had already sort of adopted what's on the big island, what is Maui County Cultural Resource Commissions. Qualifying themselves as a commission under the state constitution is not at par with the revised laws where are already qualified under Article 6 of the United States Constitution, treaty laws.
So what is, yeah, what is the question for the Senator, Uncle?
What kind of activities are happening in the Senate? Is there any issues that we can come and raise that level of oversight, of qualifying and certification? Because as an example, up with St. Francis, up by the university, I think on the 24th of this month, here you have a huge temple up there that's going to be put up for development by Avalon. And it's a huge complex, okay? And the thing is that, I'll give you an example. Was down at the legislature the other day. And here they're trying to get money to raise bonds in the legislature to allow the University of Hawaii to purchase the property. When under the revised laws of 1955, the governor already has the authority to declare it a monument status. Okay, so this is the question. These are acting because this, this is the question, what kind of stuff in the Waimanalo community? I know they had the stuff with the burials, especially when you're dealing with developments along the shorelines, even up Ma'oka. Okay, that I think that, especially at the Senate level, that it's more, it'd be some more oversight and raising that level because it's just, it's just like the thief standing in judgment of himself.
Sure.
The state certifying itself, when they're, they're certifying, they're just making up the rules. And that's what's happening with the count, in, in Honolulu County now.
Understood.
But if you went with the revised laws, you actually have a format, you have an administrative structure there that ensures and guarantees that the administration is a historic preservation review commission under the constitution, okay?
Mahalo.
Anyway, that's what I, you know, coming to my attention, so everybody's kind of aware of, of the, of the level of quality. Again, and I'm hearing things with quality. I'm really concerned about the sewage waste treatment plant way back to the time of Archie Erickson, when they had the only tertiary system with RM Towel used to work with them. And that's, and that's a huge thing.
Uncle Liko, if there's more specifics that you want that I can help with, please, Antilau, can you help him get me connected? And, and I can send that over to our Senator? Thank you, Uncle Liko. Mahalo, mahalo for your voice, we appreciate that. Yeah, mahalo, but email me the thoughts and then I, I can forward it up to the Senator. Yeah, mahalo, but email me the thoughts and then I, I can forward it up to the senator, so we can see if there's a response there. Thank you. Um, anyone else for Senator Lee? Okay. Senator, I know, um, you know, you might have heard parts of the conversation I had with Representative Martin surrounding invasive species. As I shared with her, it's just maybe time to call for a change in the leadership at Department of Ag. In addition to that, it is the concern of what do we need to do with helicopters? Uh, it sounds like the state doesn't have something like that currently serving some of the ways that we might need them to. And so, um, happy to connect, uh, with some of the people that have been sharing that information. And maybe we'll look at what options we might have, um, if that's something that could be helpful.
Yeah, sounds good, happy to follow up on all of that.
Perfect. Senator Lee, thank you so much for your time this evening and your service.
Mahalo.
Mahalo. We're gonna move on to Governor Josh Green's office. Do we have anyone from Governor Josh Green's office? Okay, hearing none, anyone on public, uh, on, online, any board members, any questions for the governor's office that we can document? Hearing none, anyone, uh, from the public online for the governor's office? Hearing none, anyone here in public for Governor Green's office? I think it goes without saying that the concerns that were heard tonight, if it is appropriate to the divisions that sit under the governor's office, that you will be getting an email about the concerns. So thank you guys so much for raising them this evening. Uh, we're gonna move on to our Congresswoman Joetakuta's office. Do we have anyone from Congresswoman Joetakuta's office? Hearing none, okay, we're gonna move on. We do recognize that we have, uh, seven board members present, so we will revisit, uh, going back up to filling of board vacancies. Uh, do we have anyone here that is interested in the sub-district nine position, Old Homestead and Beach Homestead Makapu'u? Any recommendations? Or nominations, none online, anyone in person? Seeing none, okay, we will go ahead and defer that item. Ag lot, sub-district ten, anyone online, any nominees? Seeing none, anyone in person? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to Halei Aupuni, sub-district eleven, anyone online? Nominations for sub-district eleven, Halei Aupuni, seeing none, anyone in person? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and defer those items. Um, we'll go down to filling of committee vacancies, Hawaiian Affairs and Natural Resources Committee, we have one vacancy. Is there any board members that wanna serve on this potential, uh, committee? Seeing none, any person of the public interested in serving on this committee online? Seeing none, anyone in person, Hawaiian Affairs and Natural Resources Committee? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and defer that. Thank you guys so much for your time there. Members, we are considering the approval of regular meeting minutes for January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve?
Kenani Granberg, and I'll move to approve the Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minute.
Mahalo, Kenani, for the motion, is there a second?
Brenda Wong.
Second.
Thank you, Brenda, Kenani Granberg with the main motion, Brenda with the second. Members, we're in discussion. Any amendments? Hearing no amendments, we'll go ahead and close discussion. The item has been moved and seconded, members. When, uh, your name is called, please make sure your cameras are on and, uh, state your position. Aye, yes, ahole, no, or kanalua abstain. Mahalo, members. Kenani?
Aye.
You, Jenna?
Aye.
Laura Diz? Moata?
Aye.
Papio Lani?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
Nella? Brenda?
Aye.
Kimi Yona?
Aye.
Puki? Okay, with that, we have seven ayes, zero nays, and zero abstention. The minute has been passed. Mahalo, new members, thank you so much for your time there. Mahalo, Jenna, for the review. Members, we're gonna move on. We had a action at last month's meeting regarding the Waimea Nalo Apartments renovation. We invited this evening Mr. Taylor Hunt from the project to provide the community and the board with an update on the work being done there. Mr. Hunt, the time is yours. Thank you so much for being here, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, my name is Taylor Hunt. I am a development manager for the renovation of Waimea Nalo Apartments. Like to start off by thanking the Chair and the Board for last month's vote for, uh, support letter for our application to HHFDC for financing for a substantial renovation for Waimea Nalo Apartments. Uh, that application is actually due this Friday, so that vote was very timely and we wanted to express our appreciation. I also was happy to hear from Laura earlier during this meeting, uh, who I believe is the mayor's representative, about the groundbreaking for ninety new units in Mikey Key, or also known as the Punch Bowl. I think that's great news for the community of Hawaii and, um, folks on Oahu in general. I would like to perhaps add to that conversation by saying that there should, the community should find a healthy balance between new production of affordable housing and the preservation of existing affordable housing. Waimea Nalo Apartments being a great example of that, uh, opportunity. Um, financing last touched Waimea Nalo Apartments twenty-five years ago. And the property also sits at the very top of the state's, um, portfolio of expiring ground leases. So I find in general, there is a great need for the recapitalization, the, um, re-syndication and the preservation of Waimea Nalo and, um, kind of the upgrading of the, uh, not only the apartments, but the site in general to better connect the apartment community to adjacent, uh, community amenities. So, um, I've been working on this project for, uh, four years now. This is the fourth time we will be submitting to the state for financing. And, uh, that's kind of why I brought up the importance of preservation because each year that goes by, and I think we can all kind of agree in general philosophically that, um, real estate gets consumed not only by the environment, whether it be weather, but also by humans in general. And so each, each year that goes by that we're not successful in obtaining a work in the state, we see increasing problems with the real estate. And so we actually own and operate the property to, today. We will continue to own and operate it in the future, um, but we would much prefer to operate it after an investment of approximately ten million dollars, um, which is what we're applying for later this week. So that capital will go towards upgrading the apartment units and folks' homes, but also towards, uh, addressing, uh, building foundation issues, um, like settlements and also addressing, um, sidewalks and parking lots to make them compliant with, um, ADA and fair housing accessibility, uh, laws today. So, um, the only feedback for the past four years that we've gotten from the state is they wanna see projects demonstrate shovel readiness or the ability to close. And to that end, they mean that we need to be in for permits and have permits in hand as soon as possible. So to that end, last September, we submitted to the Department of Planning and, uh, DCAB, the accessibility board, with our permit plan set. We have received cycle one, uh, review comments from all divisions and we have responded to those by the time our application goes in this Friday. So I feel like that puts our best foot forward heading into this financing round. And, uh, again, I wanna thank the Chair and the Board for their support. We really appreciate the community's, uh, feedback, involvement and support for this project. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mahalo, Mr. Hunt, thank you so much for the update. Members, online questions for Mr. Hunt? Seeing none, anyone from the public? Online? None, anyone here in person for Mr. Taylor Hunt? Seeing none. Mr. Hunt, I do wanna acknowledge, you know, there's two main concerns that we've been tracking with regards to the project update and it's the displacement of residents. Uh, I know you shared briefly a little bit about that. Are we assured that the, any displacement for the, for the reasons related to, uh, the renovations, that it is going to be navigated with the residents that are currently living there?
Correct. So we will develop a, um, relocation plan, similar to past relocations that we've done in Hawaii. Uh, River Hawaii being a recent one, or Kani Ohe, uh, renovations. And each of those projects had renovation, uh, plans, or I'm sorry, not renovation, relocation plans, apologize. Uh, there are two options for relocation plan. One, you can, what is called hotel residence on-site, where we create natural vacancy in the apartments through just natural turnover. And then existing residents will be moved on to the same property to a different apartment while their apartment home is remodeled. To the extent that that's not feasible, the owner will pay for the relocation of an existing resident off-site to an extended stay hotel at no cost to the existing household. And then back, obviously, to their, um, their current home.
Mahalo, thank you. The second major concern that was brought up is, um, the likeliness, if there is any, but what is the, uh, commitment for these residents in regards to going back to their parcel or their, their, their space? Uh, there was some concern that, um, if they are, you know, relocated, that they may not have the option to go back. Is that something that will happen or are they guaranteed, uh, a return back to that area?
As far as I'm aware, they're guaranteed their current household where they're living today, their current home.
Got it, I appreciate the, the confirmation there. Um, mahalo for you.
I will add to that, just out of an abundance of caution.
Sure.
Since I'm on the record. Uh, I was made aware by our compliance department that there are approximately, off the top of my head, somewhere between eight to eleven existing households that are quote-unquote over income and may not qualify to move back in. I share that with the community because I'm concerned about it as well. It's a matter that we will have to work with the state on and try to navigate. Um, there are certain guidelines and parameters that we operate within in the affordable housing world, which is dictated by the federal government. All of the IRS and those are very stringent. And so I will share that openly today, that I was made aware of that by our compliance department. That's all I have to say about it at the moment. I, I don't have any further color, in other words.
Mahalo, mahalo for that. I think what we've come to learn for many decades now is that that definition of affordable, uh, needs help, right? It's no longer serving us here in Hawaii. And maybe at a national level, it makes more sense, uh, on the continental US. Uh, and maybe we need to start taking a look at that locally. So I appreciate you highlighting that and making that known. Um, for those reasons, I, I'm, you know, I, I believe strongly that the project itself is not intending to displace anyone. Now, if someone is just not going to qualify, I don't, I don't necessarily think that's a result of the renovation specifically. Uh, and I would hope that I am correct on that moving forward. But I do wanna recognize that the definition of affordable is not serving in Hawaii currently and in our community Waimea Nalo. It is one that has created some challenge, um, for many. And so I, I appreciate you acknowledging that, thank you so much for that.
Yeah, I think that affordability is relative to the household and to the location and to various extenuating circumstances. I think that the program that we operate within is called the Low Income Housing Task Credit Program. Is low-income housing the appropriate term? It's just a government word in my mind, affordability to be in various things, various people. Uh, in this instance, affordability means rents below market rate, which, just off of the top of my head, your average household is paying about half what the market rate would be in Waimea Nalo community versus Waimea Nalo apartments.
Mm-hmm. Mahalo. We will continue to look at that data. I, I think this project has prompted us to think about that definition a little deeper uh, and the impacts that are gonna be felt by community members who have already, uh, been dealing with some of the challenges there. So as you come up with information, as things progress, we look forward to hearing them, um, through our channel of communication. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Members, we're gonna move on. We have one last item on the agenda for board business. This is a letter to Director Laura Thielin, uh, identifying priorities for Waimea Nalo's parks from Parks and Recreations Committee, Brenda Wong. Uh, Chair, you wanna read that information over to, uh, the Board?
Yeah, I have to pull it up.
Okay. And again, this, this is, uh, just a directive that we, you know, were asked to provide the department, uh, Parks and Recreations. Uh, we kind of go through this process regularly just to ensure that things are kept up to date. Uh, and the department, uh, will be receiving this from us momentarily. But, uh, this was a consolidation of efforts by the members of the, the Parks and Recreations Committee, um, to identify, have some discussion over, and then provide a, a resource to. Did you find that, Brenda?
Yeah, I'm just about to pull it up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Brenda, you're muted, Brenda?
This is from the Waimea Nalo Parks and Rec Committee and we wrote down the priorities for Director Laura Thielin and the city. So first priority, one, Polaris vehicle for groundskeeper. A, it was promised for Hunananiho as they do have a place to store it. And B, Bellows also requested one, the, the groundskeepers at Bellows. Two, facilities in working condition, which includes, uh, bathrooms and facilities. A, a lock for Hunananiho gate, the ongoing projects like the leaking roof at the gym and the bathroom lights at the Waimea Nalo Beach Park bathrooms, um, and C, the community is asking for shading over playgrounds, fixing the slide at Azavito, bathroom at Waimea Nalo Beach Park and the bike track. Three, big signs and signage enforcement of the laws on the signs by HPD for safety. A, info, information and education. B, prohibited activities. C, hours of operation and park closure times. And then clearly stated, no commercial activity beyond this point. Four, closing illegal access to off-roading, which can include boulders. Beginning of Hunananiho accessing, uh, access to all kinds of people and, um, vehicles going in. B, double the boulders to make it harder to access and move. C, Bellows is offering the boulders. D, boulders are effective in the Ava Wa Malu area. And five, HPD presence and enforcement to prevent illegal activities in houseless encampment and other places. A, trimming of hedges where the houses can live. Six, Bellows repairing the fence between Bellows and the public. Fence was broken, but now the whole fence is completely stolen. So we wrote a letter, aloha, eh, Director Thielin, mahalo for your continued commitment to the Waimea Nalo community. As per your request here, is a list of things compiled by the Waimea Nalo Neighborhood Board, Parks and Rec Committee members. As the committee members reached out to and met with community members, park users and county staff, the ongoing concerns have been in regards to the illegal activities and lack of enforcement by HPD. The Waimea Nalo community has continuously voiced their concerns for their safety and well-being in regards to illegal activities taking place at the city and county parks. These concerns include illegal off-roading on the beach and through the parks at night while permitted campers are there. Other concerns include constant traffic by unauthorized vehicles coming and going through the forest at Hunananiho at all hours. Our committee agrees with what was shared at the October Neighborhood Board meeting towards the HPD concerning our parks in Waimea Nalo by a community member. And this is a letter from a community member. Aloha, my name is Hulali Mohi. I have a question regarding continued illegal activities at three of the county parks here in Waimea Nalo. Bellows, Hunananiho and Waimea Nalo Beach Park. There have been, for at least- There have been for at least two years now numerous complaints about unauthorized vehicles driving on the grass and in the forest or bushes at Hunana Niho. This also includes ATVs, golf carts, and dirt bikes. More recently, there is an issue with driving on the beach at Waimeanalo Beach Park, which adds to unnecessarily shoreline degradation and works against community efforts to restore the sand dunes. And of course, it has posed a threat to beachgoers, especially when they're ripping through the sand dunes at night and can see keiki, sand crabbing, or walking the shoreline. I understand that the shoreline may not be a jurisdiction, but the point in which they access the spaces are. The community has asked for pillars, hohaku, and other forms of blocking access. These blockades were granted, and unfortunately, these drivers still found a way around them or just created new access points. I feel that at this point, we can keep wasting time and money by adding new blockages or fences or anything we can dream up as a community. But I feel that the answer is just to start handing out tickets. So my question is, after years of complaint, what can be done to ensure that the pleas of the community are not only heard but addressed? Thank you for your attention on these urgent issues. Mahalo, the Parks and Rec Committee of the Waimeanalo Neighborhood Board. So we would like to ask the Board if they would approve these priorities of this letter so that we could send it on as the whole Board.
Mahalo, Chair. Thank you so much for the conversation as well as the work. We mahalo the committee for their discussions and support. Members, you've heard the motion before us. Is there a motion to approve? Board members, any motion to approve the letter request?
This is Kenani Gramberg, and I'll move to approve the letter.
Mahalo, Kenani, the motion has been made. Is there a second?
This is Moyata, I second.
Moyata with the second. Members, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I remind the committee, the Board members, that this has gone through various iterations at the committee level. So there's been many opportunities to provide your comment to it. Hearing none, we're gonna go ahead and close. Recognizing seven members present, the item has been moved, seconded. We will vote with a verbal. So when the item is presented, members, all in favor, you'll say aye. Not in favor, a'ole. And if you are kanalua or abstain, please make that note available at that time. So voting to support to send the letter of the Parks and Recreation, highlighting the priorities for Waimeanalo Beach Parks to Director Laura Thielin of the Honolulu City and County of Honolulu Parks and Rec Department. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions? Hearing none. So recognizing seven members present, that's seven ayes, zero nays, and zero abstentions. Members, thank you so much. Uh, Chair Wong, thank you so much for your folks' work and the committee's unwavering commitment to this issue. We appreciate your folks'.
Thank you, everybody.
Mahalo, gang. We'll get that sent out. Uh, with that bringing us to the end of our agenda, meeting announcements, Neighborhood Commission Office announcements. We went over the most important, I think, relating to the NCO earlier. Uh, Director Thielin shared the candidate registration for those wanting to participate in Neighborhood Board elections. Uh, the dates were provided. Uh, February twenty-first is the candidate filing and voter registration deadline. April twenty-fifth is voting begins, and the May sixteenth, voting ends. So if you're interested in serving, please go ahead and take a look at that and participate in the voting there. And appreciate your folks' commitment and service there. Um, next regular meeting of the Neighborhood Commission is scheduled for Monday, twenty-fourth of February, twenty twenty-five. It'll be at six PM via WebEx, and you may also join them at Kapalama Halei. The next Waimeanalo Neighborhood Board number thirty-two monthly meeting will be on Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM. And will be a hybrid meeting. It will be as well here, the Waimeanalo Public Library, and online at WebEx. We invite the community and those who wish to participate to join us. And then twenty twenty-five Olala broadcast schedule is still the same, at the first and third Saturdays of the month at three PM, and then the fourth Monday of the month at nine PM. You may find video replays available online. Uh, if you need questions or directions to that, please let us know. Um, with that being said, we'll bring our meeting to adjournment. Is there anyone willing to close this off in Pule this evening? To close our meeting? Anyone online wanting to close this off in Pule? Seeing none. Anyone here in person wanna close this off in Pule? Uncle Liko, would you mind? Sit down, sit down. We can get you every mic. Yeah, sit down. I'll give you the mic.
You know, I'm grateful to be here cuz I traveled through the islands quite a bit extensively and went to the community, just like I was hearing Auntie talking about the beaches. Okay? So the things that, you know, kind of want a Pule for that we really look into the essence of the issue. As an example, the Pule for Anahola, the parks, nighttime, hard time, when you leave it to the counties. So what some of the families, they have been doing? They're actually setting up on the beaches. Instead of the kupunas being in the houses, they're actually going down the beach, they're building their halas, they're putting the boulders there, and they stay in there. So for that kind of action, so that it can be created by Pule. Many of the physical things that we need from your essence. For a reason for hua ika va'i vai. Bring us that wealth of understanding and what we're gonna do with that. When we become strong, we help other people. And then together, we can go forward to deal with whatever kind of situation that we have. And that with the passing rain, so the whole Pule.
Mahalenui, ana kala. Thank you so much for that. That brings us to the end of the agenda with no business before the Board. We will adjourn at nine seventeen PM. Mahalenui, kako. Thank you guys so much for your service. Uh, for those online, mahalenui for joining us, for those in person.